Your board meeting called to order. Real call please.
Councilman Dan.
Here.
Councilman David Bryan.
Here.
Councilman Harold.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hackbacher.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated June 28, 2021?
So moved.
Take it.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. New business before us. The first is a request from Christopher Keever and Ron Eslinger, Crafters Brew Marketing Social on 320 Commerce Street in Clinton, for a Class C on-premise beer permit. Mr. Keever here.
Aye.
Would you like to approach the podium, please?
Sure.
And Ron, you can too, if you'd like just to be there for support. But tell me what your plans are. First of all, let me give us your name and address, please.
Okay, my name's Chris- Christopher Keever. I live at 108 South Seneca in Oak Ridge.
Ron Eslinger, I live at 615 South Charles Severs Boulevard. And I do have a plan layout, if you want me to hand it out.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leave a- leave one for Rob, if you don't care. Thank you. Kind of give us an outline of that, if you don't care.
The outline is at 351 Market Street, which you can see there is a building already owned and owned the lot beside it, which doesn't have an address. We're using the address from the back of the building that is a standalone office that I also own. The idea is to put within that space a patio-type, garden-type place with umbrellas, chairs, that we can serve beer and make it a family-type gathering place, have music and have food. So it's kind of a place to go to, enjoy yourself, family-friendly.
What's your- what's your average operation going to be?
Uh, three o'clock, right? Three or four?
Uh, four o'clock.
Four o'clock till nine o'clock on Wednesday, Thursday, and then till ten o'clock on Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Are you going to use the building for anything? I saw you might have a little service window. Is there anything else?
Well, that's actually a door, and yes, we have set that up for handicap. That we- it is already handicap accessible, so that anybody with a handicap can go there. We have- I have five bathrooms in that area, two are downstairs, three in the back, that will be available. And I'm assuming that some people would also probably use the public restrooms across the street, but we're prepared for both handicapped and non-handicapped.
So is there- is there going to be anything else besides just the bathroom access on the inside? Is there going to be places to watch TV or rooms to?
That is step three, once we get the other part started, is to turn that into a place where that is a possibility, yes.
So let me ask you a question, and I'll turn it over to the council. So throughout the week, Monday through Friday, is your building, is this still going to be separated restaurant? Then your busi- your business that you do on a we- on a weekly basis?
Uh, that would be Wednesday through Friday.
Yeah, but Monday through Friday, is it going to be your business up front? And it's going to be kind of petitioned off?
Yeah, there is- there's actually already double doors that separate our business area and the back of the building.
Okay. Open it up to the council.
Uh, Mayor, uh, explain the food situation. Is it food traders or?
Well, right now, the idea is to have food trader food truck, uh, because I know we have to serve food on the premises. We have enough space off of Commerce Street with the drive-in and the fencing that we could actually park a food truck there, so we would be serving off of our premises. Uh, also, we've talked to other caterers about possibly bringing in things such as Applebee's, uh, to look at that process. Right now, we're with the Health Department at looking at the beer distribution, which Chris used in Oak Ridge when he first got started. And it's a old hippie van that actually has six spouts out the side, the beer is inside, and to deliver from that. All we have to do is get whatever upgrades that the Health Department, which is looking at it now, need for that. If that becomes a no-go, then we have the space inside of 351 to put up the beer cooters.
I think there's a- maybe a little bit of concern with your establishment in Oak Ridge. And I've been there a couple of times, not too many times, but seriously, probably once or twice. It's nice, but I don't know if it's the same type of decor that kind of fits that Market Street. Have you been, I mean, kind of focused on- aware of that and sensitive to that?
Uh, I'm not- we're not looking to recreate what's going on in Oak Ridge, other than we do want, you know, a family-friendly location. Matter of fact, we've talked and we kind of want to decorate it with antiques from the shops on the street. I mean, it just- it only makes good sense to do that.
Our key is to stay Mayberry downtown. I have a lot of people that come here through the year, they love the way that is, and definitely maintaining that decor is what brings everybody else downtown. We definitely don't want to lose that.
Yeah, the only question, Ron, I'm excited about your project. Um, it all looks good to me. The only concern I have, I want you to make sure that you adhere to the historic zoning requirements, and I would encourage you to make sure you work with our Historic Commission to make sure that we're all good to go. Because other than that, I think everything you're saying just sounds- sounds- sounds good to me.
Uh, and we do plan on doing that.
Okay.
Ron, I'd like to ask you two things, and Roger can help you out with this. Is there a Noe's ordinance at the city of Clinton, or any of the streets, or any of the areas in Clinton?
Yes, the- yeah, we- yes, we do have a Noe's ordinance, so you can file that also.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't find that, so if you can share where that is. But we do realize that we have to stop by 10, and we also- but from what I hear up at the, uh, what's that fitness place?
CrossFit.
Epic CrossFit, the noise- the music they have, and then even the music we had Friday night. Uh, we definitely will not have that type of loud music from CrossFit, but we'll be more like what we had at the dedication ceremony.
Okay. One other- I have one question. One thing in- in which, uh, just to make sure you understand it, you can't have food trucks. But one thing too, that under the current ordinance, you all have to sell food out of the business, and you all have to be the ones selling it. You do understand that, correct?
That was not made clear. I heard that we had to serve the food on our premises, and that was why we looked at the food trucks being sitting on our premises. So that is something I'll have to look at closer, because I have a misunderstanding there.
Yeah, currently, under the current ordinance, you have to sell food out of the business. So that would be- that would be an issue we'd need to work out.
You have to- I don't know if the mic works.
Okay, you're fine.
It does.
So you- I'm an ex-coach, so I can talk a little.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying that we would have to actually own the facilities that make the food? So if I own the food truck, that would suffice?
Not current- currently, you have to sell food actually out of the physical business where you're serving the beer.
Well, I- but I'm- okay, then I have another misunderstanding. To me, being on that premise, and that's what it says in the permit thing that we signed. The food has to be served on the premises. If that food truck is parked on the premises, which it would be, then I'm having trouble understanding what the difference is between the food truck, food truck or Lions Club or Applebee's, not Applebee's, Apple Blossom, from sitting on that spot rather than for me sitting on that spot.
Do you have that, Gil?
I don't have it, but I think the confusion is the owner of the beer permit.
Okay.
You have to be the seller of the food. As the- as the beer permit holder. They have to be operating as a restaurant, which means they have to be the ones selling food. So I can't sell the food and you be the beer permit holder, under our current ordinance.
Okay, then what that means is, no matter how the food gets there, if I'm the one selling it.
That is correct.
Then it's okay.
Right. For instance, we have one that brings in- they use catered food, but they're the ones that's selling that. What you bring in is a Health Department issue, not a city issue. And so if the Health Department approves that person bringing in that food, but you have to be the seller of that food.
So to make this simple, if I ordered 200 pizzas from Domino's, and I brought it in and I paid for it, and then I resell that, then that would be okay?
As long as the Health Department approves that process, yes.
Understood. Anything has to the Health Department.
Yeah, I think, Ron, is we're kind of taking our time, or ta- I won't say taking it slow, but we're trying to be methodical in looking at different ways they can provide food, like a food truck. We're just not there yet.
I appreciate that.
And we don't want to move too fast, because we- because it's hard to pull back after you go, but we're just trying to, you know, be cautious, but we are looking at what you're specifically talking about.
Well, and we have- and I have another option, and that is the fact that my building at one time, at 322, was actually a restaurant, a sandwich shop. I paved board over it, but I still have all the outlets and all the plumbing that goes with that sandwich shop. So I do have a place inside that would be, uh, if we needed to fix it ourselves, that we could do that.
Okay.
But what- let me make sure I understand one thing. No matter what comes in, as long as it's Health Department standards, as long as we sell it and collect the money, that's okay.
That's understood.
That's what qualifies you as a restaurant.
All right.
Yeah.
And then you can still have food trucks, right?
Yes, you can do both. Do both. Since- since your alleyway's connected to the building, yes.
Okay, so you're saying that if we are a food provider, we could also sell?
Food trucks.
Yes, you could do both.
Or sell from a food truck, and that would be their own business? So.
That's right.
Just for clarity, so.
As long as you do both.
Yes, you should do.
What would our specific- I mean, could I just set up a popcorn popper and sell 10 cent popcorn?
Probably have to be more than that, yeah.
I mean, just for clarity, second.
Well, I understand what you're saying. You can know in- in theory, you can make two peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and put those for sale, then have the food trucks.
Right.
So I think that's something, again, we need to address as we move forward. But as you're saying, I think- I think you have to have a good faith effort as far as what you're saying.
And let me say this, this is phase one of at least a three-phase project that we've been working on. The second phase is a full kitchen. And the reason why we're- I'd say we're kind of in a hurry to get started is because we're just wanting to enjoy a patio with this beautiful weather that we've got. And fall's going to be fantastic. And, you know, the winter's when we really had hoped to build out this phase two, which would include a full kitchen. So we're looking to get open and at least get the movement of people into the area.
Okay, great. I usually don't do this, but I know there's a lot of people here. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor, or pose, or concerns at this time? If you do, please approach the podium.
I think there's a lot of questions.
Now, we go into talking, we gotta come to the podium, please. Feel free to. You're coming up next, anyway. Please state your name and address, please.
Sherri Lynn Youngkin, 110 Dartmouth Circle, Oak Ridge, Tennessee. I think, you know, just the hesitation that the crowd showed was there are a lot of questions, um, and on- on food, because currently with the situation we have, it is just a cheese ball that's coming in. Um, I think the biggest question is, and Ron kind of brought up the statements, like if he ordered 50 pizzas, okay? What if at seven o'clock, they run out of 50 pizzas? I mean, we're here for the same reason, but we have a full kitchen already, just like Chris has in Oak Ridge. So he's able to provide that with Crafters Brew in Oak Ridge. But right now, where we're at, what do you do if you run out? Are they going to come over to my kitchen and say, "Hey, Sherri, we need some food"? You know, how does that work? Because right now, with the current situation downtown, once they run out of cheese balls, that's all she wrote for the night. Okay? Um, so that's the situation. The other big question is, is since they're having another outdoor facility, and this does not happen with Chris's Crafters Brew in Oak Ridge, he has to maintain perimeters as to the Oak Ridge law. But at an event that went on Saturday, um, once again, we had alcohol roaming the street, and I was filming a movie all weekend at the building, but then went downstairs to my coffee house, and I had several people with armbands on and coffee and a beer being enjoyed in my coffee house. Um, I had other friends that were walking the sidewalk up at my building and saw people, once again, go into their cars with beer from that. So our other question is, as we're all starting to form this wonderful community and work together at doing all this and bringing this to everybody, what is the- what are our- what's our laws? Okay? Can two people going over there, the man wants beer, the wife wants wine at my place, can the guy with the beer walk over to my bar and get- bring his beer, come across the street, and get wine at my bar? I mean, we're all into working together, that's not the problem. But Saturday, to be perfectly honest, was a hot mess. Friday, I'm sorry. Friday, it's been a long weekend.
To answer your question, and Von, you can jump in here, Roger, is to answer your question, as far as I know, is the answer's no. You can't do that. And I think it's going to go- we're going to go through some growing pains on those guys. And I- we're really- we're really hoping that you, as the owners, take hold of that and enforce that. Because you don't, then Von's people's going to have to be a lot more- have a lot more exposure down there than it was not.
I can honestly say, I mean, I've known Chris for a really, really long time, and have had the privilege of working with Ron. I mean, I can honestly say I know Chris does abide by those types of rules and regulations in Oak Ridge, as far as traffic control. Um, it's just that the current situation, there is zero. And it's really giving a bad name, and our citizens are very, very concerned, and especially about what we're trying to bring to the street. We need some control.
And I think, you know, talking about, you know, your armbands and stuff, you may need to put a limit as far as.
You're pleading a good case for me not to approve it.
I understand. I understand, but we also can't be owners.
You could come on to Eagle Ben too, at any given point, and I can show you a lot of people speeding.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't mean that we catch them every time.
Absolutely. But here's the deal, once we open up our establishments, okay?
You'll know what the rules are. The rules are you can't have it out in the street.
But what if from another bar, it's out in the street, and we have to then go to prove it wasn't either one of our bars? Because it's currently out in the street. It was actually brought to my coffee house and consumed on Friday.
What did you do about it when it was in your coffee house?
Um, honestly, sir, I would not like to divulge the people that had it up there.
I didn't ask who they were, I said, "What did you do?"
Took a picture.
Okay.
Because I didn't know the rules, I couldn't actually kick them out.
Okay, well, this is- this is new to all of us, and we're working through this?
I understand.
So what you- what your point of view on what happened Friday, um, won't happen in the future, shouldn't happen. But like, you know, anything, you know, sometimes there's the spirit of the law and the rule of the law. And I think that I hear your concerns, but what you're articulating is, are good reasons for me not to grant either beer permit.
Absolutely. I understand you.
I- I'm not sure what you- what you want.
Okay. Sherri, you'll have a- sit down for a minute.
Absolutely.
You're next, anyway, so hold on a minute. Ron, you had another comment?
Yeah, it works both ways. It could have been coming from her spot to the other spot also. The rules are, you don't go outside the building. When you're on that premises, it's no different than you're inside a building. You go outside the gate, you're not allowed to take beer with you. And that's been working very well up at the yard. They have their little premises, you can come out and go to the garden, but until Friday, nobody, and I think it's because the street was closed, and it was that party atmosphere, the only reason that that made a difference in what it had made in the past.
I think- I think your future patrons and patrons who've been down there, they also have a learning curve. They- they need another rules.
Right, I agree.
And we need your all's help to do that, and we can do our part to do that also, so. Any other? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address. You gotta go- you gotta go to the podium.
My head is flat on speaker. My name is Missy Snead, I'm chairman of the Historic Zoning Commission. Missy Snead, Historic Zoning Commission Chairman. I live at 501 Eagle Ben Road, Clinton. Uh, I wasn't going to speak, but when Zach brought up about working with Historic Zoning, because we were just named a Tennessee Historic Main Street, and Mr. Eslinger, I wanted to say this. He called me about the beer garden, and I told him what the procedure was, that there is a certificate of appropriateness that has to be issued after he submits his plans to Historic Zoning Commission, then we meet. Then he came to our workshop, we told him again. He ignored that, and he started work on his beer garden, building a stage. The city stopped him on that. He told you just now, Zach, that he planned on working with HCC. It's clear he is not- does not want to work with us. We have not seen his plans, he does not have a certificate of appropriateness, and it's our job to protect what the historic district looks like. We have nothing against a beer garden, that's not our business, but we do care what's in there. And when he said he planned on working, he has not shown that he is willing to work with us. That's it.
Yes, I started building a stage, because that stage is within the grounds of a piece of furniture. It did not need a permit. The permit that she requested for the painting and all the other stuff, I did turn that permit. She has a plan with that permit that goes in. But the stage itself, all we have to do is paint it to make it, which we're going to do anyway, to make it look as good as any other piece, the right colors. And it's also hid, basically, behind that fencing in the front, that you really can't see it anyway. Uh, it meets all the parameters according to John Householder that it comes under the auspice of not needing a permit, that it would be like another piece of furniture, because it's not attached to anything, and it makes the measurements of being appropriate.
Is the- is a protocol on this, Roger? We really never have talked about it, so like, if Ron does something, then it goes to the code enforcement officer? Then at that time, the code enforcement officer decides if it needs to go to Historical, or is this something he can take care of?
Yes, it can happen a couple of different ways. Mr. Eslinger is correct. The portable stage is something that does not go before Historical Zoning. Uh, the paint that he was painting the building is something that's been approved by Historical Zoning, is an approved color, so that can be approved by the Historical Zoning. Uh, the fence replacement that he's doing in the rear, I think, chain- he's taken down a chain link fence and replaced it with a wrought iron, that is something that doesn't require a permit, so that can be approved by the building official. The rest of the stuff that he is talking about, he has not submitted any plans or anything for the other part of the construction. You were talking about the other phases, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so that's- that's always- that's the only thing that he's talked about doing so far. So at times that he's looking at changing the facade of the building or something like that, that would something that could possibly need to go before Historical Zoning, yes.
Okay.
I've got a question there, just for clarification. Does he seek out Historic Zoning, or does he seek out building official, and the building official then pulls in Historic Zoning?
Usually, that's what happens. It can- usually, they'll go, he'll submit the plans, and depending on what it is.
Where it's located.
Yes, it can.
And then?
It could be- it could be- it could either go to the building and/or Historic Zoning. So the building official and/or Historic Zoning could issue the letter of appropriateness.
Okay.
But who determines that and/or?
Who does he?
Is it the code enforcement officer?
Yes, it's the code enforcement officer.
So who does he or anybody else?
He starts with the code enforcement.
Who does he start with?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Yes.
He'll come in, get a permit, and then.
And you guys will know the address, they'll know where they're talking about, they'll know that's in a certain district or zone, and they'll know there's certain criteria. And then if John in his office needs help, or realizes that, hey, you know, we need to pull these Historic Zoning people in, we will. I mean, my point is, the citizens, I don't think, need to be going two or three places. I mean, and they're not, to what you're telling me.
Right.
Okay.
So I pulled this up today to refresh my- my own knowledge on it. "The powers and duties of the Clinton Historic Zoning Commission shall have the following powers", I'm reading straight from the code, "to review all projects within any historic district that require the issuance of a permit before such projects can", and this is critical, "lawfully commence." So I think they would start with codes enforcement. Codes enforcement would say, "Wait, this is in zoning, this has got to go before the historical zone. This is for the historic zone, it's got to go before the Historic Zoning Commission." And then they are the ones that determine, because they create also, they adopt design review guidelines. It's not up to John Householder.
Well, what's that and/or language you used? Where does that fit in here?
Well, that's for the certificate of appropriateness. If it's- if they've already adopted that, like the paint, so if they've already adopted that paint color, the building official can approve it, they don't need to go back before them.
Okay.
So that would be one example. The- in this in case, in what Ron and them doing didn't require a permit.
I guess what I'm saying is that maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but it sounds like what you're saying, and what you're saying, is conflicting with one another. Did I hear that right?
No, I think we're saying the same thing, just it's- they can start with John, and then John.
And they need to.
Then he would bring them- bring them before the Historic. He would point them.
Yeah, I mean, we need- we need- we need these folks to be coming to City Hall first.
Yeah.
And then it's up to City Hall to decide.
Yeah.
Which avenues to take next.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, Ron, uh, just explain what's your next move as far as improvements to the lot that you're talking about.
Well, we're trying to find a paver to come in and get it paved out, get rid of any missing chunks. Uh, the fence that was put into the back, but most of the improvements that we're doing would just be normal repair, that I just got through putting on all new shingles around the building. I didn't have to get a permit to do that, because I was just fixing what was already there. My understanding was, and the reason I did come to the workshop for the Historic Zoning, I had gone before the Historic Zoning when I first bought that building. My understanding was that everything that had to do with painting and building out front on the street, yes, I had to get. But I was building basically a temporary structure, not attached to anything. They met all the requirements for not needing a permit, so therefore, I saw no reason to find out if I needed a permit. John said it didn't- it came under the auspice of not needing a permit, because it wasn't attached, and the size was under the size that would need a permit. That's why that was never put into the original, as far as the colors. Uh, we did put in to have a type of window-type mural. We realized that, okay, that's not going to go, so that's fine. Uh, the rest of it will be umbrellas, chairs. We also asked about putting up sun cells with the colors that would match the area, just for shade and drizzle. And so other than that, basically, everything else we're doing is more repair. The only thing that seems to have the issue right now is that basic- that stage, that area, which is behind the fence, and wouldn't even be seen if we wanted to, you know, set something in front of it. But again, it does not require a permit, I didn't think it needed a permit. I talked to my son, who used to be a licensed contractor, who's actually the one building it, and he said, "With all he's ever done, that size, that place, not attached, did not need a permit", and so we started.
Well, I've got this on my mind. My next question is, and if this happens, I think this needs to be talked about to the Historic Zoning folks. They do- do they, and I'm asking this as a question, do they have the authority to go to a property and ask questions about things like this? Or should they come to City Hall and ask the building official? Who polices this?
It would be the building official.
I agree. And so, so in- if any of these members of the Historic Zoning Commission feel as though something has gone awry, I just want to make sure that there's one point person. And there may have always been a one-point person. But if anyone from that committee-commission seems that there's anything out of place, they need to come to City Hall and allow City Hall to go talk to Mr. Eslinger, or anyone else. I mean.
Well, I think in this case, you said City Hall, I mean, you're talking about John.
John, yeah, just question. When I say City Hall, I'm talking about codes enforcement here, within the city boundaries.
Right.
So is that a fair statement to make?
I think so. Or even Roger's.
Yeah, Ron, I mean, and that's when- that's the reason I said City Hall.
What's your cell phone number?
Yeah, okay.
It's real good, Tim Tast opinion, and it's a few years old, from Centindale, it was in Tastley, the term. I'll try to send it out to everybody, and it explains it pretty good. And, you know, there is some checks and balances there, just like there are with Mayor and City Council, myself, that if the city manager makes a decision and y'all don't like it, you can have a special call meeting and review it.
Right.
And there's some checks and balances there, but we'll try to get that out.
I just want to make sure that as you're- I've been on the- I'm on the other side of the table, and you're a business owner, and you have different people coming. I want to make sure that as a business owner, you've got a lot of stuff going already when you're doing these projects. I think you just need one point person. If there's somebody going awry, they need to be reeled back in. I'm not saying they don't. But we don't need multiple people going.
Missy, I'm sorry, you had another comment?
Our procedure is, is we tell everybody, which we told Ron, go to City Hall, Jenny's got all the forms and all, you present your proposal there, John Householder gets it. Then he contacts historic zoning. The only thing that we have pre-approved is paint colors, just to save people time. We don't have anything else. We have, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness for any kind of awning and we don't have any pre-approved awnings. We're working with the Baptist Association right now. We denied their first request, but they're happy to work with us. And we have gone out on site. Private property, yes, but look at the Bosticks, what they went through for a year. They went through the process and they came, got a certificate of appropriateness, Jinx met us out on the property, explained everything. We received nothing from Mr. Esslinger at all. It's almost as if he wants to bypass us because he wants to do his own thing. Well, we haven't seen anything and we don't have any pre-approved awnings or anything like that.
Well, based on what we're seeing though, that, that didn't factor into this with where we are right now.
Well, I think what we're saying is, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the process should be, if everybody's on the same page, Ron goes, City Hall gets the permit, John picks up the permit saying, this, I need to get historical involved in this.
Right.
Now, if he's not, and you feel like you should, then that's probably when you need to have a clarification as far as why aren't we involved in that?
Yes, and I went to see Roger on Friday.
But Ron, Ron's not the, I mean, Ron's, I think, did everything he was supposed to do from what I could tell.
But the reason I got up.
Because he went to City Hall first.
Well, and the reason I got up is because he said he planned on working with us, even though we told him upfront about his certificate of appropriateness. And John, we had a phone conversation and we said, you know, we want a, historic zoning wants to be involved in this. And he said, fine. And the next thing we know, we get an email that he's approved all this. And so I spoke to Roger on Friday about it and we just, we want to be sure we know what Ron is putting in, in, on the historic district.
And I respect what you're saying, but the bottom line is, John still has that, that say, if you will, to determine if, if, who needs to be involved in anything.
Well, by Tennessee law though, the Historic Zoning Commission has an opportunity to disagree if the building inspector or building official allows something. We have, we have an opportunity to, you know, to dispute that. And we haven't been able to get that, so.
All right. Thank you, Ron. When you, let me ask you one more question. When you plan on opening?
I'm sorry?
When you plan on opening? You have an opening date?
We do not. We're waiting on this before we could actually finish any of the work we wanted to do. We have turned into the Historic Society. The only thing that's in question is that platform. Now, that, what Missy had to say about that platform is because it is built out of pressure treated wood, that it didn't meet the, their criteria. However, I'm looking at the gazebo, I don't know that that gazebo is not, except for the columns built out of pressure treated wood, just for the fact that like what we're going to do with this platform, it's painted. So once the platform is painted with their approved colors, which we have that chart, then I don't see where even that type of wood stands up. But that was an email I got, that that was the basis for, hey, this is pressure treated, you can't use that.
So did you get an email from the Historic Zoning Commission?
I got.
Please speak to the microphone, Ron.
Yes. See, I feel like those communications should have came from John Householder.
Well, John was part, it was actually, I got a copy and went and sent to John.
Okay.
I talked to John this morning. John came to see me as soon as he got word through Missy that we had started building the deck. And then at that time, John comes to see me and he looked at it, realized that the deck itself does not need a permit to start with, and then we continued.
And that's his call.
I, I think we've, yeah, we'll pull ourselves out of this rabbit hole before we go down another rabbit hole. Ron, I just would, just please work with historic, work with Missy and her folks when it's appropriate. Work with John, I know you will. Anything that's been done, hadn't been done, maybe accordingly, the, the best communication. Let's, let's all, and I know you are, and I know the answer is yes, so just make sure we're.
Well, I did turn in, she does have, or should have, I think Roger has it, the permit that I did turn into the Historic Society sometime early last week.
Great. Ron, we, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Here, a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Having a motion second and a third? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I would like to just add, we talked a little bit about food trucks and I think we really need to look at, because there could be a lot of games with that. And I understand, I'm not saying Ron, but I'm talking about in general, that, I know we talked about it, but we need probably start working on a little bit more to, for that to become a reality. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Since we got a little warmed up, let's go to the next one. Carol Hannah, Hannah's Ain't The Rabbit Hole, 364 Marcus Street in Clinton, for a Class C on-premise beer permit. Hello.
I'm Carol Hannah. I live at 105 Partridge Place in Clinton, Tennessee. Sherilyn Youngkin, 110 Darkness Circle, Oak Ridge, Tennessee.
So what's your all's plans?
Well, we want to do a bar and bistro type thing. We do want to work with the community with ours because there are a lot of community outreachers that are near to my heart. So we have already planned that in our, you know, cycle. We plan to open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And Saturday and Sunday are just, I mean, Sunday we will be closed, but Saturday will be held for special events or anything that's going on in the community that we want to be a part of at that time. And our hours will be from four to about 10 or 11. And then on Saturdays will differ because, Friday and Saturdays will differ because of special events that may be going on in the community.
No, so are you the, are you the caterer that?
I am the caterer and I'm an event planner as well and cater.
We've actually worked together for years in the wedding industry, so we've catered weddings and done wedding planning together throughout the greater Knoxville, Clinton area for years now.
So are you planning on preparing the food on-site or bringing it in?
On-site, yes. I am officially.
Yep. She is the official caterer of our kitchen, our kitchen health department. Our clearance is, I know it's kind of confusing, guys, but of course, we have the coffee house, which also runs off that kitchen. Elizabeth Claire's, the event center, runs off that kitchen. So what Amanda did at the health department is she certified, when she, our original certification was for, a certification for the bar, every bathroom, the coffee house, the commercial kitchen, all, all the plumbing, everything downstairs. This past few weeks, we've worked extensively with Assistant Fire Chief Jeff Little and also with John. John actually came and did a thorough relook at our building.
Is this in the competition? I mean, you're a promoter.
We had a lovely shortlist that Mr. Youngkin back here is whittling away at. And then the only thing we have left for, to change our catering liquor license over to a serve-to-the-public liquor license, is our capacitor report. And as soon as we finish our shortlist and, and get it back over to John, then he will come, re-inspect, issue our capacity level for the entire floor, and then we are good to go.
Yes, so our plans, Lord's will, will be to that mid-August to late August to do a soft opening, just to welcome the community into what we're doing. And we would love to work with anybody when they have any ideas because our first love was events regardless. So let's do events with what we have, with a bar and a bistro.
And. Now, I know the first question, it seems to be, as we've been coming to Beer Board, are we having TVs? The answer is, y'all ask every time, are you having, are you having TVs? Yes, we are having big screen TVs in the bar area, so that'll be kind of like one situation there for games, but we also have a baby grand piano for all those of you that have visited so far. So we also will have jazz singers. We will go over in the other room, we will do local bands. We're looking at several different things we can do with the community. I have reached out to the fire department if there's different things we can do and, and use our liquor license and our beer license to help raise different funding for different projects in the community. We'd also like to participate and do a lot of event planning for that and use our resources.
So are you going to change your coffee shop at all and just, and put the restaurant on the, on the other side?
No, sir. The coffee house will stay there. I employ a lot of Clinton High School students. So we will have, our POS, our POS system will run actually throughout the building. We have a new one coming in this week. So there will be a POS system located in what we are calling the rabbit hole and, which will work in, in connection with the PO system and the coffee house. You cannot purchase beer or food that comes along with the rabbit hole in the coffee house. Okay? That is a, that is completely separate. Can you take a beer and walk up the stairs and sit or a margarita? You can, but you cannot purchase from that register and be served beer in the coffee house.
So I'm a little confused. So the restaurant, where you, where you eat, is it upstairs?
No, sir, it's downstairs.
It's two.
On the left side?
Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
But there are doors to close it, to cut that off as well.
So how many levels?
We have, we have two more bays.
You have three?
It's three altogether.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just.
It's 5,500 square feet altogether downstairs.
That's big. Okay. Rooftop bar, you say, are you working on that still?
Eventually.
Our, our plan is to, so the, the very first dollar we make is going into that rooftop bar. John fortunately has extensive knowledge in rooftop bars, and so we will be working with him. But my goal is to be the first rooftop bar in, in Clinton, but it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of money, a lot of drinks sold.
Any, any questions, guys? Gentlemen? The only concern I would have, if, if high school students are being involved, they can't sell the alcohol.
Correct. Absolutely.
That's why she was saying separation of.
We have a, and I'm.
Separation of a POS system as well as a door to make sure they're closed during the hours of operation of the restaurant.
That's fine.
And that's why our hours are later, so that it gives them time to go ahead and get off and go home.
What type of spirits will be sold?
What type of spirits?
We will have tequila, the basics.
Basic, basic bar setup.
So beer, wine and?
Yes.
We'll have some signature cocktails, but can you get a Coke and whiskey? Yes, absolutely.
And we will also have mocktails for our mocktail people. We want to make sure that everybody is included into this bar and bistro.
It's a cocktail that's not like a Shirley Temple.
No, we, we don't even know the word Shirley Temple.
So let me ask you a quick question about wine. So does wine go with liquor, the, as far as the license?
Yes.
But you just can't get a wine without a liquor?
You cannot, unfortunately.
We were, we had a discussion about that. I, I thought it was, but I wasn't sure.
Unfortunately, we would have, but you can't.
They have the application for it, but you actually can't do.
Do you both?
Can't do one without the other.
Any other questions?
That goes before the state, right?
That's the state.
Yes, that goes before the state.
Yeah, and our last connection with that, literally she has a letter, she can actually show you, our last thing is waiting our capacity statement from John.
Okay. Anybody out there, yea or nay, or comments? Give you fair balance here. Everything good?
I heard a ding, so I thought that was positive.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Here, we got a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. You got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Any other business before us for Beer Board? Beer Board, we be done for the night? Beer Board meeting adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Mayor, Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, this is for the public hearing, by the way, not the regular meeting, so. Public hearing is for a number of ordinances. If you'd like to speak on those ordinances, you can please come to the podium and speak on those at this time. Ordinance number 662, this is fiscal year 2021 budget amendment. Anybody like to speak on that? Ordinance number 663, this is rezoning R2 to B2 at South Charles G Severs Boulevard. Anyone like to speak on that? Ordinance number 664, rezoning B2 to R3, South Charles G Severs Boulevard. Ordinance number 665, rezoning B2 to M2 on Frank L Diggs Drive. Ordinance number 666, zoning M2, that's the annexation area off Frank L Diggs Drive. Resolution number 812, annexation, and this is part of the Tax Map 43 parcel 122.05 off Frank L Diggs Drive. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Public hearing adjourned. Regular meeting called to order.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamey.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Farah.
Present.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion to the agenda?
So moved.
I've got it, I'll do it. Discussion is, we need to amend the agenda for resolution number 814. That will be placed at the end of the resolutions. Here, a motion for, for approval?
So moved.
Second. Having a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Do I still need to make a motion for the approval of agenda?
As amended.
As amended. Do you hear a motion to approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings and your provisions that you've given us and your protection. I pray now that you'd be with us during this meeting. I pray for wisdom and I pray also, Father, for the staff and for the management of the city as they make decisions each and every day. Father, thank you for the city of Clinton and for those who've gone before us and laid the foundation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks, Jim. Here, a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated June 28, 2021. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time, anybody else want to talk? You already gave me the hurry up sign. I don't have any communications for the mayor, but I will say one thing. Let me say one thing. We had a fantastic fair. Record attendance, record dollars coming in, record weather, and I tell you, there's just a few that that do a lot, and one guy does a lot to see people down from him. I don't know how he does it. I mean, he works a week, a month or two before, then during the fair, then a week after the fair, and does a good job. A lot of people do a good job doing.
Bill Ricks does a good job, too.
He just drives around, picks up money. That's all he does.
I never did see Bill at the fair.
He's in a truck driving around. Yeah.
He's the bag man throughout the year.
Yeah, he's in hibernation. So with that that being said, I'll go to community reports. C School report, Kelly. Hey, threw me off there for a second. One week away.
One week away. We are ready. We are ready. We also are glad to have ET back dealing with the blaze now. Well, you always know the fair is in town, and all of a sudden you'll see ET for a month, and you wonder if he's still alive, but.
You know, he just does the fair so he can seek out donors for the blaze.
And he did, and he did. Actually, we have some good news to report about a donor very soon that we look forward to sharing with you that he was able to secure at the fair. So we are extremely excited that kids are getting ready to enter the building again. Teachers are coming back on Monday and the following Monday, or well, actually, next Thursday on August the 5th, we will do our sneak peek. And so parents of all kindergarten through sixth grade students are invited to come into the school between 3:00 and 6:00, drop off school supplies, meet their teacher, and see the classroom. So that will happen on August the 5th, and then on August the 9th is going to be our first day back in school. So that will be a half day with dismissal at 11:30. Kindergarten will start staggering on that day and stagger for the first two weeks, and then we'll begin our first full day with first through sixth graders on August the 10th, which will be a first full day. So looking ahead into this year, we know that we we've been on some phone calls with the Health Department. We are not completely out of the woods with COVID yet. We will still be expected to contact, trace, and quarantine for those who have had a high-risk exposure. So we still walk into this school year expecting that students, some students will experience a quarantine, and we are prepared to continue to do the virtual learning if that occurs. But we are going to try to resume some sort sense of normalcy. So masks will be optional for both teachers and students. We are returning back to our normal lunch lunch schedule and our normal playground schedule. We are, however, just in an effort as we try to regain normalcy for the kids, we are going to continue to limit outside visitors, at least for the beginning of the year, just so that we can make sure that we we are good with the mitigation efforts that we have in place and that everyone is staying safe. So we hope that we'll be able to kind of lift that restriction on outside visitors once we get the school year good and up and running. Our T and Ready scores were released to us. Don't really know why they always do that on a Friday night, but every single year they do that on a Friday night, and then Jamie Jordan and I obsess about it all weekend long and don't have a weekend because our nose is in the data. It's embargoed until next until next Monday, but we knew that we would take a slight hit due to the fact that 60% of our kids were quarantined. We missed nine weeks of school, and when we looked at the days of instruction that were missed just to COVID quarantines, that equaled about 8,500 days of lost instruction of our students last year due to COVID-only quarantines. That doesn't include your absences of stomach virus and strep throat and all the other things that ail children throughout the year. So we knew we'd take a hit, but honestly, there's some high spots where we outperformed our 18, 19 data, which we're super proud of, and then there's some spots that we're going to have to address this year. So next next month, I'll be able to share a little bit more specifics with that, but this was a whole harmless year. I'm still super proud. Overall, the test data looks great considering the circumstances of what we of what we went through, so we'll take that baseline, and then we'll start to determine kind of how we need to plug in holes and move forward with our S R federal funding for the next two to three years. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? Kelly, so you're not going to go virtual at all?
We are not offering this year. If we if we gave a virtual program, we had to set up a complete, separate virtual school. And while we had a few isolated students that did well under virtual, the majority of our students did not do well on the end of the year testing. There was a few that did, so I don't want to paint the picture that it was all bleak. But I think to continue our tradition of excellence, we know that in-person, face-to-face instruction is the best way, so we decided to not do that this year.
So is there a state recommendation, or is it your all's responsibility, or your just what you can do as far as having a line in the sand if there's so many cases in the county or a percentage, or have y'all, is there something like that, or is this like you're just going to take a look at it when we think it's bad?
We are just, at this point, we will be, we're in close contact with Charles Turner. He is a dear dear friend of Clinton City Schools, and so we'll just collaborate with the Anderson County Health Department and, you know, go with recommendations based on current current numbers. But we are, we are hopeful that we are going to be able to have a semi-normal, knocking on wood, semi-normal school year. It's time.
What's the current quarantine recommendation for the health department?
At this point, it has not changed. The quarantine, the only thing that's really changed is if you are vaccinated, then you don't have to quarantine. And that that.
Is that 14 days?
Yes. If it's a household contact, it's actually 20 days, and that's what killed us last year. We we had under 25 cases, positive student cases in Clinton City during the whole course of the year last year. That wasn't, the positive student cases wasn't really what killed us. It was mom and dad getting it, and then the kid was a household contact and went home for 20 days. That's really what hurt us. So now, if mom and dad are vaccinated and get exposed, the children will not have to quarantine, but the majority of our children are under 12, so really, they they don't have the opportunity to be vaccinated. So for us, the quarantining and close contact tracing will still have to happen for a little bit longer.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kelly. Good luck this year.
And we're sparing you Scott Wright tonight. He doesn't have a report.
Unless you all want.
Why did you even come?
Because I enjoy seeing you all.
We enjoy, we enjoy seeing you, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals met on July 12th. The Board of Zoning Appeals applicant William Dyson requesting front setback variance to 20 feet for property located at 708 Crestwood Drive. This was for a portable carport to be placed there, which is really consistent with the neighborhood and about the only place he could put it, so it was approved. Applicant Kathy Melton requesting front side setback variance to 20 feet located at 204 Riverside Drive. This is right, right down at the corner of Riverside Drive, almost under the bridge, and where she's placing this pool is the only place probably on the whole property that she could place it without getting into issues, so that was also approved. Applicant Brent Hannah requesting side rear setback to six feet for property located at 301 Walnut Street. This is for a storage building, and his neighbor was contacted and had absolutely no problem with it. The Planning Commission met also on July 12th. Applicant Alan Trivet requesting final plot review for property located at 594 Melton Hill Drive. This is another one of the South Clinton re- sub divides of property to kind of equalize some of the properties that were originally drawn years ago. So it was, it was approved. Applicant Eric Reed requesting site plan review for property located at 185 Frank L Diggs Drive. This was deferred due to the fact that they didn't have all their information together, and there were a number of questions that that still need to be answered, so it was deferred at this at this particular time. Applicant Thomas Hicks Construction requesting site plan review for property located on North Charles G Severs Boulevard. This was approved with the condition they had to pick up some signatures and some other approvals that were were minor in nature, so they, that was approved subject to getting those signatures and approvals. And then applicant Michael Scott requesting site plan review for property located in North Charles G Severs Boulevard. This property is zone B4, and this also pretty much the same situation as earlier. This was deferred because, again, there were a number of questions that were unable to be answered and not all the documentation that was there that was needed. So as a result, that was deferred until those information and answers could be provided at a future date. Applicant Rocky Top Erosion Control requesting site plan review and bond setting for Heritage Landing located at Westbury Drive. Property is zone R3. This is a, I guess you could say, continuing dialogue. We gave preliminary approval earlier. Right now, they're running into some issues on permitting before they can really begin some of the work there, and that is separate from our preliminary site plan review to get the permits to to begin working on this. There is an issue with a number of things there before we can give final site plan review. Some that, well, I think Roger may allude to this, but probably we're going to look at some outside help to try to determine, is this, is this doable? Are there issues there that we need to deal with? So we, we took no action on it because we have given preliminary site plan review. Right now, the holdup for this, this person is permitting, which would allow them to go forward. Any questions?
Any questions, Larry?
Grading permits go through you?
The what?
Grading permits.
Uh, I think you have to go through, you go through Jenny to get them, but we don't have to give any approval to it.
Okay. Besides Clinton, Community Trust Bank, there's quite a bit of dirt removal. That's an area that floods quite a bit, and I just wondered if it'd come through you or any plans?
No, it hasn't come through us yet.
Okay.
We may see it in the future.
I'm sure you will.
Next month's agenda.
So the one that was the Tommy Hicks Construction, where was that? Is that left of the Walgreens? Is that where the Dairy Queen's going?
I believe so.
Okay. Now, the applicant, the Rocky Top Erosion Control, now, so they've, I know they're pretty familiar with this issue.
Yeah.
Is, does they have to come back to the Planning Commission, or is it, is it subject to this approval of getting that accomplished and John writing it off?
We have given preliminary approval. Now they have to get their permits for some of the things.
Right.
Then they will have to come back to us for final site plan approval.
Okay.
Because we haven't.
But their grading and things, when they get this resolved, can they, do they still, do they have to come back to you, or do they start the grading process?
I think they have to come back to us before they.
I think once the stormwater issue was solved, John can issue the grading.
Permit.
They've still just got to bring their site.
Right.
Okay. All right. There's, there's certain things they can do subject to that permitting, but to complete the project, they have to come back to us.
All right. Any other questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Farah.
I just wanted to point your attention to the financials that are, that are in your packet, and also, I've asked Dudley to also send two slides on the Flex Pay program. If you're unaware, Clinton Utility Board offers a Flex Pay program. It's a pay-as-you-go program. It gives the customer the option to pay. It's a lot like putting gas in your car, and when you run out of cash, you have no power, and so you got to come back to CUB and put more gas in your tank. And so what this is, what this has allowed, it's allowed us to keep people with electricity more often than not. It doesn't require, you know, late fees and start backs, and it's, it's been great, too, for our write-offs of bad debt. And if you look at the net recovery numbers, when we started this program, net recovery was, write-off on bad debt was, let's go back to 2010, $250,000 we had to write off, and last year was $39,000. So the program's been a runaway success, and I think a lot of this occurred when Jim McBride was on the board as well, and just kudos to the staff that have been able to put this together, and it's been a great thing for our, for our community, for our ratepayers, especially those that that struggle with with keeping their their electricity on. That's all I have.
Any questions for Zach?
Zach, I know we've spoken in the past, I think Councilman Gann mentioned it last time. I've had a few more questions about the broadband, KUB. Can you rearticulate the kind of the talking points there? We might, it's just so much in the paper.
So if they want their rates to go up on electricity, sure. That's my take on it. It's, it's, it's just, Moorestown, ask Moorestown how that's worked out for their, their utility. Our utility is in the business of providing reliable electricity, water, and sewer. We are not structured to do broadband, nor do we want to. We have current contractual relationships that are beneficial to our ratepayer with those cable networks, or cable companies. I would ask them to come to a CUB meeting to get further information. I mean, I understand certainly, you know, the frustration with cable companies. I mean, they're right up there with.
Yeah.
I don't like them. But having said that, I don't think that CUB providing those facility or those services is the answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Zach. Larry, do we have any more?
Green McAdoo is doing well. We're trying to piece things together through the summer with board members and everything. Still having jazz on the hill and attendance is, is great. Really good, you know, if you're looking for some, let's call it good old music, it's a good place to be on a, on a Saturday night. So I'd encourage everybody to participate. Adam is still doing a fantastic job of codifying and getting, getting all the, our information organized and in place, and I do know the last meeting, our attendance has, has improved, our attendance in visitors has improved dramatically over the last year or so.
Great.
Mayor, I can come back real quick to.
Sure.
If you don't care, you can give them my personal cell phone number if they have questions and, and encourage them to contact me or text me, and I'll make sure that their concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a chance to receive bids for the fences at Doll Park at the Carden Farm Park. I would recommend accepting the second lowest bid from the Loudoun County Fence Company in a total amount of $42,460 plus a $800 contingency for an additional gate for a total of $43,260. The lowest bidder did not meet the requirements for the licensing requirements.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Guys, if y'all have a chance, I was talking to Zach today, but if you have a chance to drive down there, it's really taking shape. If you can go up, if you go down on, by the river and go up, take the second entrance that Duane's been working on and walk out there, it's a much, it's a nicer overview, and it's really looking good, really looking real sharp. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor. Finance, defer to Gail.
You've got your sales tax report. We were a little over 10% for the month, year-to-date, 13 and 1/2%, so we've had another good year with sales tax. The county as a whole was up a little over 23 and 1/2%. They're right at 16% for the year, and that's, of course, countywide. The county, again, from the, from a rule standpoint, continues to, to do double digits growth every month, which is, which is really good. You'll notice in your report, we've got in excess of almost 1.2 million, and Roger's got a recommendation for that, and that, we will still have one more month of sales tax and state shared revenue to come in that will post back into June, as well as some miscellaneous revenues, a little bit more property tax, a few revenues that come in about the 20th of the month that will post back into, into June. Property tax, we've got about $180,000 uncollected right now, so it's a little bit more than what we've had prior year, but I anticipate that we'll continue to, to collect that and be pretty much where we're at. We usually end up with about 12, 13,000 that's uncollected. It's not usually that, that high of a rate. We have received our direct appropriation grant from State Tennessee. We got that money last week, $125,299.
Is most of those commercial or residential property tax?
A lot of what we don't, it's a mixture.
A mixture of.
Mainly residential. We do end up collect, not collecting some personal property, but by the time we send it over to Clerk and Master, we have collected the, pretty much all commercial, and it's mainly residential at that point.
I know County Commission had an extensive discussion Monday night about Airbnbs, and I think they've, they figure they've got about 30 in the county, and there were some question about, are they getting the appropriate tax dollars? I know we have two in the city of Clinton. Are we getting our tax allocation from those two?
We are getting, we have now for a few months, we are getting with our state shared revenue, we, we post it to hotel motel tax. Where that comes from or what that entity is, I don't know what that is, but we are getting, it's a very, very small amount, but we are getting some.
Anything else?
Thanks, Gail.
Thank you, Gail. In accordance with the city's fund balance policy, we hereby request authorization to assign fund balance in the general fund for any funds from revenues exceeding expenditures for the year, fiscal year 2021 for the following purposes: street surfacing improvement projects, one hundred thousand dollars; T.DOT TAP grant Phase One and Two; traffic stabilization improvements at North Charles Seaver Boulevard area; Harbor Drive improvements; TDEC LPRF grant; ADA entrance improvements to the Clinton Community Center. These projects are stuff that's already been approved, that we just haven't, that we know we're gonna be doing. We just haven't assigned any money to them. So, we'll be taking last year's excess funds and actually assigning to these projects. That way, when they do come up, most of them probably within the next twelve, well, maybe sooner than that, at least within the next twelve to twenty-four months. That way, we've got the money assigned to them. We won't have to take them out of fund balance.
I guess the detailed research, I guess, on Harbor Drive?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna meet with the homeowners, I guess, that was one stage of it.
We've had one meeting. There's seven homeowner, six homeowners. We had one meeting. That meeting, a couple of them live out of state, couldn't make it. We have a meeting lined up for those two on August the tenth. We did meet with the other three, very good meeting. There is still one homeowner that we can't track down. So, the city attorney is working on that. But yeah, with, everything's moving forward very well with it.
Very good.
And that will bring our total paving money up to four hundred and fifty-four thousand. So, when we get ready to do another paving, it's building up pretty good.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Roger, one thing I'd like to do as far as the paving part of it, if you can put those, what the plan is in the current project, Excel sheet that we work off of, you know, and have it specifically, like what's gonna be the fall paving, what's that gonna entail than spring, just to know. So, 'cause we get, probably get asked that more than most things.
Prove this and I'll tell you what we're doing next.
Do what?
Go ahead and prove this and I'll tell you what we're doing next.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We have, and we talked a little bit about it in the workshop through the Knoxville TPO, which we're a member of now, they have offered through an engineering firm, a pavement management system, which they gave us a pretty good grant. I think our part was about thirty-two thousand. And they're paying all with about six thousand of it. Allowed us to enter along with Maryville, Oak Ridge. I think there's five total cities. I don't remember the other two. A pavements management system, which they'll actually come in, survey all seventy-three miles of our city streets, and actually put us on a pavement management system, where right now, we kinda just do a windshield inspection of our streets. They'll actually do a very detailed inspection of our streets, put us on a maintenance program. So, the initial cost is, like I said, about thirty-two thousand. But they, through the TPO, we get a grant. We only have to pay six thousand. They'll evaluate every one of our streets and can tell us, not necessarily that we may need to repave them, or there may be other, other ways that we could either sell them, or there's other industry standards out there that we may be able to do to improve the longevity of our streets. So, we felt like it was something very, well, well-spend the money.
Is it a recurring thing?
Uh, it's, it won't be that my teach year. It was, you remember Bill?
I think after the initial run, then we can continue to maintain it on our own. Because we'll have a GIS database available to us from the system. It'll take all the guesswork that we've done thirty-plus years out of it and actually put it in the system.
But we're not gonna wait on that system kick in before we start paving some roads. Possibly not. I make a motion.
Once again, we're also waiting on some of the American Rescue Act money.
Yeah. Well, I think it'd still be nice, I mean, we, we should have a pretty good plan. I mean, that for, it sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot.
We used to, we used to measure city streets with a guy hanging out the window with a wheel. So, this may be a little more accurate. Seriously.
Who was the guy that held the wheel? The winner or the loser?
Any other questions for Roger? Anything else going on? Alright, thank you. I would like to ask you, when we get to the ordinances, if you just kinda give us cliff notes on these. So, just kinda prepare yourself a little bit. Give you ten seconds. Under second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number six sixty-two. This is fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget amendment. Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Gail, you might wanna hit this and watch the overview on this one again.
Again, we're just lining things up mainly with our capital projects, 'cause we don't budget them through the year. I will tell you that the Comp Controller has issued some new rules that we have to follow. So, you'll start seeing budget amendments.
Throughout the year?
Throughout the year, in a, kinda like what Scott does. And then, we'll still just do an ordinance at the end of the year. But the way you all approve the budget, Roger can move money between departments. But the capital projects kinda goes above and beyond that. So, it's mainly capital projects that I'll bring to you starting next month. But it's just lining things up.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six sixty-two passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number six sixty-three, this is rezoning R2 to B2 on South Charles G. Seavers Boulevard. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Say it. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
It's the apartments on South Seavers.
I believe so.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, Holberg Drive.
Or it gets on the other side.
She's in apartments, she's in duplexes?
I don't think we've got any plans on what she's doing yet. She just won't do rezones.
Okay. And that B2 covers apartments in, just, what is it covering?
General market.
Okay.
Just on this side of Mayor Bull.
Yeah. With that house, where they tore that house down?
Where they were.
Okay, gotcha. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six sixty-three passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number six sixty-four, this is rezoning B2 to R3, South Charles G. Seavers Boulevard.
This is the.
Motion to, motion to approve?
So moved.
Zach.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six sixty-four passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number six fifty, six sixty-five rezoning B2 to M2 on Frank L. Diggs Drive. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? This is the property in that.
It's the industry this.
Yeah, yeah, Donut Holiday, yeah.
Trying to clean all that up.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six sixty-five passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number six sixty-six, zoning M2. This is annexation area of, off of Frank L. Diggs Drive. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? And this is part of that Donut Holiday, yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six sixty-six passes on second and final reading. Under resolutions, resolution number eight twelve, this is the annexation part of Tax Map forty-three, parcel one twenty-two point oh-five off Frank L. Diggs Drive. And this does require the second reading, which we're doing now. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? This next, yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number eight twelve passes on second, second and final reading. Resolution eight fourteen, this is a resolution supporting the historic downtown Clinton Main Street Program's application for the downtown improvement grant. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? And this is just part of the process of becoming a downtown market street.
Well, they've already been kenned at their prime for facade grant.
Oh, okay, that's what it is, yeah. That is a very good grant, by the way. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. And I think twenty.
Businesses of pine.
I thought it was more than that. Seven? That's good, that's good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stamey?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number eight fourteen passes. Any old business before us? Any new business?
Uh, Mr. Houck?
Go ahead.
Good. Update on football field. Understand there was a little glitch there, football field. But it looks like you've been corrected. It looks pretty good today.
I think so. I think they, they've got too much ground on it, so they've corrected that. Worked over the weekend and.
So, the next stage is turf?
I think so.
There you go. Jim?
I would like to ask and discuss a city attorney and a contract. And, and what's brought this on is, I think as council, that's one of the positions that we are giving authority over. And, and my question is not necessarily the city attorney himself now, which is Mr. Cry, but I'm not sure that we are getting counsel that we need or should have. And again, it's not because of him. But I think there needs to be a document. I think we need to review what we as a council want from a city attorney. I think our city is to a point now to where we're having developers come in. They come in, they have ideas, they express ideas, things they wanna do. And I'm, I'm not sure that we, a lot of times, know how to address those. We don't know the questions to ask. We're that body to ask the questions. But I'm not sure that we know how to ask those. So, give you an example. You have a developer that comes into town and he or she wants to do a certain project. And I see in my mind, something along these lines. That developer calls the city, talks with Mr. Houck. Mr. Houck gets with the mayor. And the developer and Mr. Houck and the mayor, along with maybe, if it is a big enough project, goes with the, the council that we hire and discusses that project. Because I feel like that it's our decision as council, as a governing body, to go forward with the project. But a lot of times, I don't know that we know how to ask the questions. We don't know what questions to ask. We don't know where concerns are. So, I guess the point is, there was a period of time where we really couldn't afford much of a city attorney, just like we talk about paving. I mean, when we first, I first came on council, you had the gas tax. And we weren't using the gas tax to pave streets, because we were, didn't have funds. And we were using those funds somewhere else. But I feel like that we need to decide, I guess, and I don't know if you do it in the form of an RFP or how that works. But how, what we, what do we want our city attorney to do? Do we want he or she to be at these meetings? Do we want them to give counsel during a meeting? I mean, we may go down a street we don't need to go down legally, that causes litigation somewhere. And, and, you know, an attorney could say, you know, Mr. Mayor, you probably need to pause that discussion. I don't know the proper etiquette how that's done. Planning Commission, I know we have a state planner. But again, I think litigation is not going away. It's bigger than it ever has probably been. Our cities get to the point where I think we're turning a corner. We have turned a corner to where we're gonna have developers coming in wanting to do certain projects. And once the, once the toothpaste gets out of the tube, you can't put it back in. And so, I don't know how you start something like that. I think you come up with, here's what we expect a city attorney to do for us. And then, I think you take bids or applications. And again, it has nothing to do with our current attorney. I just don't think as council, we, we, do we know what we want? So, I open that up for discussion. And if I'm the Lone Ranger, we'll shut her down and go to the House. But comments?
We, you basically currently have a, a contract with Mr. Cry. He, he bills a five-hundred-dollar-a-month fee that covers what you have in that contract, which is very, very limited. And then, if he does extra services, for instance, as a delinquent tax attorney, he billed you separately. If he's handling the cases for cleanup, say, he bills those hours separately. And he gives you a special hourly rate under that contract.
Does it, does it make more sense to just hire outside experts as needed, like we do with Magnet Mills? Or have all that in-house? How much did we spend with the Magnet Mill? I can't remember his name. He came and spoke to us.
Albert Harv?
If he came a couple of times, how, how much was that for the total year with outside attorneys?
But we had to constantly.
And we were going outside law.
Also, also keep in mind, you do have, we use a lot of resources from MTAS. Personnel issues, open meetings, open records. Those are three particular topics I can think of recently that we normally use MTAS for their expertise.
Last meeting, we talked about this at some point. I, I was thinking it's last meeting. But so, we're talking about maybe even offering insurance to that position. And you, you had an objection to that. And I can't remember what it was.
Well, I, I think we, anytime we offer insurance outside of an employee base, just like we recently, you know, did some changes with council, we have to be sure that our insurance carryo, carrier will allow that. 'Cause right now, the way it is, it's, it's in an employee base. So, if we go as, as a contractor, as in the way that Mr. Cry is, we would just have to verify that, that that is allowed.
I think what Jim's, I think he's, what he's saying, but just to clear it in my mind too, is I think he, I mean, it's nothing about Phil. I mean, but I think we need to reevaluate what we want that position to do.
What we want.
What we provide. And they, and have those expectations written out in some type of contract, maybe renew it every four years.
And if we have to pony, you know, if we have to ante up a little money, like if our expectations, let's just say, for, let's say we have four current bullet points on that contract. Well, if we expand it to six or eight, we know that there's gonna be more responsibility. We come with more responsibility, comes more payment. But we may only want four bullet points on our contract. But when's the last time we've reviewed that contract? And are we really using the resource that we have that's there?
Right.
And I, I, as a council member, I'm not sure we do, like we need to. I know we use MTAS a lot. And for those who don't know, MTAS is legal counsel. But that's part of our agreement with them. I mean, that's right. I mean.
That's a free service.
That's a free service. It's just like the county has CTAS, we have MTAS.
And, and the way MTAS is, you, you have an attorney on staff in the Knoxville office. That that's, that's her, and it's female, only job is to provide the legal assistance.
Right.
I know, one conversation y'all and I had a month or two ago?
Was that, kinda what you're saying, we, we, I don't think we're at the point that we need a full-time staff, staff attorney. But maybe if we had somebody that was here X number of hours a week. And like you said, we, we actually paid them to be here, whether it be, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand a year, and actually had them on staff, that they were dedicated to give us X amount of hours a week to be here for staff or for counsel.
Right.
If we had questions. And it may not be set hours, but it may be, you know, twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours a week.
Is, I mean, from a planning commission setting point, BCA standpoint, do they have legal counsel? Representation of things that they do?
They have a planner, but he's not an attorney.
He's not an attorney. He's just basically a state planner that knows the language and the lingo and.
The law.
Yeah, right. So, again, I just throw that out there. I don't know how you proceed from here.
I think it's worthwhile maybe to ask Roger and staff to review the needs of attorney and maybe a heightened role or more defined role.
Right.
For council and other, and other functions. But I'd like to look at too, I, I think it's a real good bait, if you will, to, to offer insurance if we can. Because, you know, you got a young guy. In, in the past, you know, with Phil Cry, and I think Phil's done a great job for us. But that's not the best, I mean, a, a good attorney, most good attorneys aren't going to, it's not gonna appeal to them because they're busy doing other things. But if you can offer like an insurance, if they have three kids or something, that's a big, that's a big deal for them. So, you may wanna look at, you know, increasing their, their benefit to, to come on board.
And we might not have a developer come in here for another three years. Or you could have four ideas come in the next six months. But again.
We got some issues going on down with, with some development downtown and stuff that, you know, legal, legal counsel would be good.
Okay, well, that's.
I mean, as the lawyer's act, I mean, if you don't know the entry, you, you go get it, don't you?
I do.
I mean, you, we don't have to sub out a different lawyer just 'cause I'm out.
Well, I think, I think to Jim's point, I think that there's been, on my seven years on council, there's been a couple of issues where, where we needed a different, a different type of lawyer. And, and some of it is that lawyer's style. So, you know, there, there's, there's a, there's a certain sense of urgency, I think, that, that, that council has had on a couple of issues that have come before us. And that's been, I think, some of the aggravation. And, and each attorney has, and this is not a comment on my dear friend and our friend, Phil Cry, this is just on attorneys in general. They have different attitudes about how to approach a case, or approach a legal issue, or approach other counsel. And some are a little more aggressive than, than others. It's their style. So, I would be looking for someone who is not only an expert in what we need legal opinions on, but I think someone that is attuned to our sense of urgency with some of these issues. As it pertains, it's usually codes enforcement comes up to, you know, that's usually a big one. I think also, as we, it seems like sometimes, and this is the way that I think some of these developments happen, we're the last to know. And, and we've just found out, sometimes we have a very limited say on it. So, all that was an experience. When we had Mark Mametoff in front of us, and I mean, that was literally the first time. I was like, what, what do you mean, it doesn't come before this body? But, you know, there's other issues out there. And I, so I, I agree with you. And I also agree with Mayor's statements that maybe staff circle wagons come back with some recommendations.
Well, that's what started my thought process, was when Mark Mametoff was here. And he's an expert in his field. And we don't need an expert all the time.
Right.
But, but we just need, we just need good counsel. I mean, and again, it's not necessarily that you're the expert, or that we need to be the expert. But a lot of times, we just, okay, what question, what do we need to be concerned about?
Yeah.
I mean.
Education.
Education. I mean, when it comes to pharmacy benefit services, I, I wouldn't be an H R person that goes out and negotiates these contracts with these P B Ms and these medical benefit people. But as a pharmacist, I know how the P B M industry works. So I could educate you as an H R, hey, ask them these three questions. And so I think that's where we're lacking a little bit, is just knowing what to ask before it gets out of hand.
Well, too, they would let a councilman like ourselves know a few answers when the public asked us, what's going on here? We can ask, we can answer it to a reasonable doubt of what's going on there. Don't have to know everything. But this last little development going on, I know very little about that. And I guess maybe that's what sparked this.
So is it reasonable to ask staff in the next sixty days to come up with an idea, sixty-two minutes or thirty to sixty, to review that? I mean, again, I don't want to burden, but at the same time, we don't want to sleep on it either. I mean, so is, this is July? So September meeting, possibly review back and respond back to us and say, hey, we've looked at the contract and we've looked at some other small cities and here's what they request of their attorney. And again, has nothing to do with the current attorney, has nothing to do with the current pay schedule. Because I know if we're going to ask for more, we're going to have to pony up a little bit, and I'm fine with that. We've got the same that we had, I've been on council however many years I've been on, we've got the same arrangement we've had, yet our city continues to grow. And that's good.
Yep. That's good. Good, good discussion.
Let me mention, one thing that, and I mentioned this to Roger, that Anderson County did prior to them having the, the city attorney, or the county attorney that they have, is they basically, an attorney was an employee and, and there was an understanding or an agreement that, and so basically they covered some office staff, some, but basically that attorney was housed in their own office where they had access to, you know, that's the thing you set up an office for an attorney. It comes with a lot of, of expense. So they helped cover that expense with the understanding, hey, you're going to devote X hours a week. You're going to be in our meetings. You're, you're available for us, your phone call away, but yet we're not paying a full-time attorney whereas basically getting a chunk of this attorney's office that is already established. And that Anderson County did that for years and years until they got to the point that, as you know, now they have a county attorney and that county attorney has however many legal staff. But for many years, that's what Dave Clark did at that point was.
Well, and we can be creative, like you were talking about. I mean, I had no idea of that. And that's what we would lean on you guys to help us be creative. But just help us. We want to make the right decisions, but a lot of times we don't know the questions to ask to make those decisions.
Any other questions? Discussion? Good discussion.
Very good.
Mayor, real quick before we close, I just wanted to, you know, it's, it's come to my attention in my own experience that there, there is some confusion. And tonight, I think laid, laid that issue out. The relationship between codes enforcement, historic zoning commission, sometimes planning commission, sometimes zoning, you know. There seems to be, whether it's, whether it's a lack of communication or maybe our, our citizens just go out and do stuff without telling the right people and then, then we're not making them undo what they did. I'm not aware of it, all that, that goes on. But it appears to be that I want staff to really work hard to communicate with all these, these parties to make sure that when, when we have issues like, like what's come up here tonight, that, that to me is just a communication issue. I mean, that's a person that wants to do right and, and a committee that wants to do their job. And so it's just clear that these people need to communicate. And I think sometimes it may be a lack of knowing what to do. I, I don't know. But I just want to see that addressed and, and that, yeah, we're going to work on communication. And I would, I guess my, my, my request is, can we improve communication between governmental bodies? And I may be the Lone Ranger on feeling that, but.
Well, you know, we just, we never had a discussion like we had tonight as far as that, the protocol and that. And we kind of worked through it as we, as we talked about it. But that's, and that's, with so much stuff going on downtown, I think it just kind of, kind of came, became that, that issue. But I think it's clear now, we just need to make sure all parties kind of work in their own lane and, and, and not be, and not, John, John, I hope he doesn't give it a second thought to say, this needs to go to historical versus, because he's busy to say, well, I want to do, I'll just do it. Just, I mean, the things that he, that's even close to being historical needs to be given to them to have that, to have that decision made.
And then I.
Make sure that there's consistency down there.
I think too, what I've also observed is, what should come properly before the committees? I'm going to take a historic out of it. And then what is the purview? What is the oversight? And what is the authority that each of these committees duly, duly is entitled to? Because I, you know, it appeared to me, and I'm just using this issue tonight as an example, well, why didn't that come before historic? Well, because it didn't have to. Because it didn't, it didn't require a permit. It didn't require that level of, of oversight. Well, did historic know that? I, you know, and I'm, I don't want to relitigate this evening. But those are things that we just, just need to communicate.
I think the biggest thing tonight that I got to come away from is I'm not sure the committee has, this particular committee had confidence that city staff was handling it according to city codes. I, I think there was a lack of confidence there. Or that's what I, that's what I walk away with, is the committee, yeah, there's a responsibility to the staff, but there's also a responsibility to the committee to say that I have confidence in the staff. If they need me, they'll call me.
Well, and I, I think, I think Zach's just kind of asking, was it communicated after it was approved? I mean, or is that an expectation? You know, does he send an email saying, I've approved X Y and Z and making sure?
Art, Art would like to say something. Art, we just, please, just state your name and address, please.
Art Miller, four oh five, East of Ben Lane, and I'm a member of the Historic Zoning Committee. I think, you know, in, in Mr. Eslinger's defense, but also in Missy's defense, he did attend our workshop and he was more, he, he talked about wanting a mural. And, you know, and then he talked about some of the other things that we're going to do. And we, and we did all say, you know, you need to submit your plan for the certificate of progress. So he was told that. Now, then, you know, he starts the deck or whatever, you know. I mean, if, if, if John told him that was not something the committee, then, you know, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think there's just, like you say, some miscommunication. And then one of the problems that the committee has is the enforcement. I mean, there's lots of things that are just not getting enforced. And then another problem that, you know, if the, if a committee member says something to the code enforcement officer, I don't feel that he should go to that business and say, well, Art Miller complained about this. He should say, this is something that's brought to my attention, or I'm the code enforcement officer. So I think we need, we really need to work on our enforcement. And, you know, and then back, the backup, you know, I don't, I don't need to go down the street and tell people. I'm, I'm not going to do that. But, you know, I think if we could be a little, little stricter in our enforcement and then, you know, I'd like to see some, every time a business comes into town, there really should be a packet. And I think that there may be, but I don't know how much that's looked at about who they need to contact when they're going to put a sign up or they want to do things like that. So that, that's really all I wanted to say is just kind of.
Good comment.
I would like to see us, I would like to see us, even if we had a, a workshop between you all and the, and the, and the Historic Zone Committee and John.
And maybe that's something that needs to happen, is to.
Because you're right. I mean, there's so many things now coming in. We're growing leaps and bounds and we want to keep our historic area, you know, to meet the guidelines. Historic. But, but I don't want to discourage this. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want.
That's good, good.
Any else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.